No opportunity to provide public comment. Thank you for joining our Glendale City Council Workshop.
Okay, good afternoon. Welcome to Glendale City Council Workshop Session of August 10th, 2021. This meeting is called to order. We're not going to do a roll call. Everybody is in their seats. So if you would take note of that, Ms. Power, please. And at that point, if you'd go ahead and introduce item number one.
Bickman Industrial AN-226, annexation located at the northwest corner of Glendale Avenue and Reams Road.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Here to provide staff report is our interim planning manager, Tabitha Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Staff is seeking input and direction to proceed with the proposed annexation AN-226 on approximately 75-acre site located at the northwest corner of Glendale Avenue and Reams Road. The property is currently -- sorry, apologize for that. The property is currently located in the county with an RU-43 zoning district and would allow for single-family residence. When a property is annexed into the city boundaries, the city's most compatible light zoning district is initially applied, which would be RR-45 Rural Residential. Following the annexation, the applicant intends to rezone the entire site to PAD, Planned Area Development, to allow for industrial development totaling approximately 1.1 million square feet. For distance context, the annexation site is located approximately 11.9 miles west from City Hall. The current annexation map represents various annexation cases surrounding the subject property This conceptual site plan illustrates how the site may be developed. Based on the fiscal impact summary provided.
Tabitha, hold on a second. Two things, could you turn the volume up? It's a little difficult to hear. And then secondly, Councilmember Tomachov had a question.
Thank you, appreciate that, Mayor, because I did not hear you said it's 11.9 miles, and then I couldn't hear the rest of what you said.
Mayor, councilmembers, would you like for me to start over?
The distance it was from wherever you said -- I didn't catch what that fact was.
If the video/audio guys could turn the volume up, that would be awesome.
Okay. Okay. So we'll go back here, just for consistency. Is that better?
No.
Okay. I'll just project my voice a little bit more until they fix the microphone. For distance context, the annexation site is located approximately 11.9 miles west from City Hall. The current annexation map represents various annexation cases surrounding the subject property area. This conceptual site plan illustrates how the site may be developed. Based on the fiscal impact summary provided, the completed project would generate a positive net fiscal impact with one-time fees estimated at $4.5 million and could result in a net impact to the city of $222,000 per year. This fiscal impact chart just shows an illustration of how the revenues, expenditures, and net benefits would occur. If council gives consensus to proceed with this request, the next council action steps with hearing dates to be finalized are the blank petition tentatively scheduled for August the 24th, City Council Public Hearing, and the adoption of annexation tentatively scheduled for September the 28th, City Council Public Hearing. And if approved, the 75-acre property would be added into the city's boundaries 30 days after the adoption. Also, the rezoning application to rezone the property to PAD is tentatively scheduled to be heard on September the 28th, which would be on the same agenda public hearing as the request for the adoption of the annexation. The potential community benefit of proceeding with the annexation request is it would allow for the city to determine the type of land uses, influence the type and quality of development, and provide employment opportunities to the community. Mayor and council, that concludes staff presentation. I'm prepared to address any questions you may have leading to your direction on the requests. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the council on this item? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make sure I'm identifying the right parcel because I'm having a hard time figuring it out on this map. Is it the former golf course?
Council, Mayor, councilmember Tomachov. No, it is not. I'm trying to see if I can get an aerial map up here. Doesn't appear that we have one. Hold on.
Do you have a cross-street intersection, anything like that?
Reams and Glendale.
Yes, Mayor, councilmember. It's the northwest corner of Glendale Avenue and Reams Road.
Okay.
Northwest corner.
All right. So, Mayor, if I could, so it's surrounded by residential? Basically, that's what I was trying to figure out. At least on the north and west, it's surrounded by, and then on the east by Reams Road? Is that?
Okay. So, Mayor and council, it is surrounded by rural residential to the north, which is in Maricopa County, and to the east is agricultural land, which is a future industrial development for the cubes at Glendale. And then to the south is agricultural, which is within the county for, once again, that RU-43, which would allow a single-family residence. And then also to the west is within the county with the rural residential zoning of RU-43 that would allow for the single-family residence.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Not a question -- well, there's a question inherent in this. Sometime in the past, the council had requested that land use actions, annexations, or development out in that 303 area, that our paperwork include the noise contours for Luke Air Force Base, so we could see where the property lays in respect to that. I don't see them in today's, either of today's, so perhaps in the future, we could do that. I'm particularly concerned about the 65 decibel. That's really the make-or-break-it decimal line for me, but others may wish to have all of them, but -- and that helps us to also figure out how this relates to our general plan, and whether or not it's going to require a general plan amendment, or if there'll be one requested in the future. Thank you.
Mayor and council, duty noted. Councilmember Turner, we will make sure that information is included in future packages. But to answer your question for this item, the property falls within the 70 LDN and the 75 LDN noise contours of the Luke Air Force Base.
Thank you.
All right. If we could just expand upon it just a little bit. Is Luke aware of this project, or are they supportive of the project?
Mayor, councilmembers, staff is going through the review process now with the application that the applicant filed. So Luke has been made aware of the application. I'm not certain if Luke has provided a determination on it as of yet, but when the application comes before you with the rezoning, we will make sure you have that information.
Perfect. Perfect. Any other questions? Okay. And no actions required right now?
Mayor, councilmembers, I need a consensus to move forward with the annexation request or not.
Say it one more time.
I need a consensus from the council on whether to move forward with the annexation request.
Okay. Is there a consensus to move forward?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good. You have it. Ms. Power, would you introduce item two, please?
Hopewell AN-228, annexation located at the southwest corner of Northern Avenue and Reams Road.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I've gone deaf for the last five weeks, but if everybody could speak up and speak into your microphones, I'd appreciate it, or if the guys in the back would turn the volume up, or both, please. Okay.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report again is our interim planning manager, Tabitha Perry.
Thanks again, Mr. Phelps. Mayor and council, staff is seeking, once again, input and direction to proceed with the proposed annexation on approximately 104-acre site located at the southwest corner of Northern Avenue and Reams Road. The property is currently located in the county with RU-43 zoning district and would allow for a single-family residence. When a property is annexed into the city's boundaries, the city's most compatible light zoning district is initially applied, which would be RR-45 Rural Residential. Following the annexation, the applicant intends to rezone the entire site to PAD, Planned Area Development, to allow for industrial, manufacturing, warehousing, and distribution land uses totaling approximately 1.6 million square feet of development. For distance context, the annexation site is located approximately 11.9 miles west from City Hall. Once again, the current annexation map represents various annexation cases surrounding the subject area. This conceptual site plan illustrates how the site may be developed. Based on the fiscal impact summary provided, the completed project would generate a positive net fiscal impact with one-time fees estimated at $6.2 million and could result in a net impact to the city of $320,000 per year. This is a chart that kind of illustrates, once again, the revenues, expenditures, and the net benefit to the city. If council gives consensus to proceed with this request, the next council action steps with hearing dates to be finalized are the blank petition -- excuse me, the blank petition tentatively scheduled for August the 24th, City Council Public Hearing, and the adoption of annexation tentatively scheduled for September the 28th, City Council Public Hearing. And if approved, the 104-acre property would be added into the city's boundaries 30 days after the adoption. The rezoning application to rezone the subject property from RR-45 to PAD is tentatively scheduled to be heard on September the 28th, which would be on the same public hearing agenda as the request for adoption of the annexation. The potential community benefit of proceeding with the annexation request is it will allow for the city to determine the type of land uses, influence the type and quality of development, and provide employment opportunities to the community. Mayor and council, that concludes staff presentation. I am prepared to answer any questions you may have leading up to your direction on the request. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions on this item? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have, based on the estimated development fees, it's a pretty sizable amount, do we have an idea of who the end user is going to be here, or what type, specifically what type of development that's going to be? Manufacturing seems like that would be a high -- because it's a much higher amount.
Mayor, council, from my understanding, the time of this application, it would be speculative at this time, so there's not identified end user. So the fiscal impact summary took in consideration if the development was for industrial manufacturing, warehousing, and distribution. So all those different types of uses was considered in the summary.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. And I have one more question. Hopewell, is that the name of the property owner? Is that the name of a development company? What is that? What is Hopewell?
Mayor and councilmembers, the project name is Hopewell Northern and Reams. And with that, I want to find it real quick so I can be correct.
Okay.
Hopewell is the real estate.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Make your computer easier to use. Windows will read and scan this list automatically.
Go ahead.
Mayor, members of the council, so the reason why the amount on this annexation application was greater was because of the size. So if you go to slide number six, the assumptions are for the economic analysis is that we assume that half of the space would be in warehousing and the other half in manufacturing. The prior annexation agreement was for about 1.1 million square feet. This is for 1.6 million square feet, and so that then changed all the inputs, and that's why the economic impact is greater on this than the prior application. Again, until they identify uses, they could be heavier on the manufacturing side, or they could be heavier on the warehousing side, and that would adjust those numbers ultimately.
Good. Any other questions? Okay. And what action are you looking from us? Ms. Perry.
Mayor, councilmembers, I need a consensus to proceed with the application.
All right. Consensus to move forward.
Yes, sir.
There you go. Okay. Item three, Ms. Power.
Presentation regarding proposed regulations for temporary fencing.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report on item number three today is our Development Services Director, Jamshu Meta.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Before you is the first draft ordinance, potential ordinance of temporary fencing. This was something that the City Code Review Committee had discussed several months ago, and it was triggered by concerns from some of those on that subcommittee that fencing remains uncontrolled, in some cases, unmaintained, therefore unsightly, potentially unsafe if it's unmaintained, and some of it would last longer than one would hope it would. It was indefinite and did not have a timeframe. So with that in mind, what we have here, Mayor and council, is a proposal that was prepared by staff. And the intent here is to reflect what the wishes of the Code Committee Review was, to have an ordinance ready for your consideration. So here's an example of what I would call a good temporary fence, in the sense that it's temporary because it does not have permanently implanted fixed footings. Generally, you'd see sandbags on the side, and that would make it a temporary fence. But we obviously have several experiences of seeing the worst of these kinds throughout the metro area and also within the city limits. Several valley cities already have an approval process for temporary fencing. Some of the cities that we know do have a permit process include Tempe, City of Phoenix, Scottsdale, and the City of Buckeye. So if this is the general course direction provided by council, and of course, I'll go through a lot more detail, but the intent would be that it could be included in the Unified Development Code, the zoning rewrite process, and then would be part of that within the Walls and Fences section. So by definition, it's a fencing system that encloses outdoor activities. It will be fully contained above ground, no permanent footings are allowed. That by definition. But then when we go to the next slide, which has to do with the when and how long is it effective? Temporary fencing will require a building permit. It's not a requirement today. As an initial permit, it could be up to 180 days or less if it happens to be like, for example, a special event that only lasts a few days. And it can be extended under certain circumstances. Those could be, maybe it's an ongoing environmental remediation going on, continued safety hazards that haven't been addressed. The site could actively be developed and hasn't concluded at 180 days. There could be extenuating circumstances, insurance settlements haven't happened yet, or there could be some litigation issues. Also on the temporary fencing that requires a permit, the exception would be if it's already included in a construction permit. It could be a special event. It could be a city-initiated abatement process, for example, unsafe to occupy structures. Then continuing with the conformance criteria, once permitted, what would be known to us and will be displayed at the site would be the permit details, the contact information, so we know what the responsible parties are, and also location of emergency access signage. The temporary fence could be as tall as eight feet, and as long as it meets the site visibility triangle criteria. Temporary fencing will not cater to barbed wire on top. So sometimes there is barbed wire, especially if it's got some security issues associated with it, but if it's temporary in nature, we would not allow that. It's unsafe, especially if that fence were to topple over and the barbed wire would be then at a lower level. And further for consideration of visual blight, and to prevent that, there would be either a mesh or a fabric screening that could be required. It's not mandatory every time, and that would be to ensure that there's uniform color and material, the adequate information on it showing what's coming next behind that building. If it happens to be new construction, people would be curious to know what it is, as long as there is no off-site advertising associated with that, with that screen material. Then finally, in terms of code compliance, this would be to ensure that the site, the fence itself is maintained, it's safe, it's not unsightly, and it truly is temporary. So therefore, it would be part of our code compliance issues. If we notice something that's without a permit, we would work with them, grant them the 30-day notice, leading to a final notice, and we don't expect this, but the process could eventually lead to a civil citation. So with that, Mayor and councilmembers, I'm glad to answer any questions and seek consensus to move forward, if that's your pleasure.
Mayor.
Question. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. With regard to the fabric screening, I've got a couple of questions after you answer this one. Do you know why, for what specific reason, contractors use the mesh around their construction sites on those fences?
I could venture a guess here, Councilmember Adama. Sometimes it's just the dust that could be blowing as well, but also if there are some security issues, they've got heavy equipment over there, they're storing construction material. If they'd like to conceal that, that could be an option for them.
Thank you. And if that's the case, can you do a little research? If that's the reason why they use it, maybe we should put it in the permit approval that they have it, to prevent that from that coming into the city? And then if we do, and if we don't, do we need to have a standard on the color of fabric? There's the traditional black and green, but there's also blue and a bunch of other colors. I've also seen some contractors just use old banners. And so if we're going to use a screen, the question is, can we do a standard? And then to include the perforations in it, so the fences don't blow over prematurely?
Councilmember, Mayor and Councilmember Adama, all of those are good suggestions, definitely. The idea is to standardize it. In the text that we've provided you in the package, that is the intent, to have standardized color, make it all solids, don't go too graphic. But the intent is identify what's behind it, have the folks who are responsible for the project name and their contact information available to us. So all of that could be definitely part of that ordinance.
Excellent. And then, that was it. Thank you so much for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had one question regarding the permit. And under the ordinance that you've drafted, it was a little unclear to me what, say you have a contractor who is building a building or is remodeling a building, is the fencing permit going to be part of that building permit, or will that, there'll still be a separate permit?
Mayor, Councilmember Malinar, in most cases, as it relates to construction, usually the fencing is part of their site submittal. There's no need to have an additional fence permit then. It's part of the construction, and it can stay valid as long as the construction's going on.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Meta, for the presentation. I think this is a good thing, but how does this apply to, there's other vacant parcels around the city that are zoned. I just think, I know there's one on 59th Avenue that we've had ongoing issues with the fence kind of falling over, torn-up screens, things like that. Is this only going to apply to construction zones, or how are we going to apply this to? I mean, I understand that this type of fencing in some neighborhoods is a backyard fence, and that's fine, but if the idea is basically just to fence in a vacant lot, that's not, there's nothing happening, it's been like that for years, how will this apply there?
So, Mayor and Councilmember Tomachov, it's not necessarily related only to construction-related work, although that seems to be the more common reason why it's there. It could be abatement procedures, which is tied to construction, there's a permit associated with it. But there are also instances where a property might be lying vacant, there might be a structure there, it's being targeted for graffiti very often. At some point, the owner decides to restrict people from entering the property and painting the sides of the walls, and they put up fencing. If it's temporary fencing, then this is what the ordinance would do. This particular proposal has to do with temporary fencing, which means the posts are not permanently embedded in the ground, hence the 180-day limit, and we expect the owner to then come back either for renewal and show us there's evidence of some progress happening on the site. Otherwise, there's no point in extending it. We want to see actual progress being made, and if they aren't making any progress, then the permit is not issued or not renewed. In that case, they have to come back with some permanent solution.
Okay. Thank you. I am looking at the screening material part of this, and I don't see that it says must be maintained in good condition, because sometimes it gets torn up, and so I don't know whether we might want to add that, but one, you know, monsoon storm and it gets all ripped up, and then it really looks bad. So if they're going to screen it, I would think we would want them to maintain it in good condition.
You're absolutely right, Councilmember, and there is a provision in the same line where we talk about uniform color and material, and must be maintained in a condition free from rips or tears of graffiti or vandalism.
I'm looking right at it, and I didn't see it. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. Is that on now?
No, you're on.
Your last section of the zoning ordinance states failure to comply with the conditions, yada, yada, will be a violation of the ordinance and will be enforced as such. So what are the penalty provisions if this is not maintained?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, code compliance would be very much aware of every permit that's issued, so if they are passing by a site with temporary fencing, they can look up on their laptops that they're carrying with them, whether it's permitted or not. And if it's not, then they would do some research on the property, ultimately issue a 30-day notice to the property owner, whoever's responsible for that. That could eventually lead to a final notice, which usually gives them an additional 15 days to respond. Ultimately, it's a civil citation.
All right. What does a civil citation entail? Does it include any kind of monetary fine? Do you know?
I would, I do not know the details, Mayor, Councilmember Clark, but I believe whatever the civil citations associated with property walls, which would be in line with fences as well, if there is a violation, for example, extra height than was required, those kinds of citations would be similarly applied.
My only concern is it's nice to say what they must do, but it's got to have some teeth that if they do not comply, that there will be some kind of penalty, and hopefully some kind of financial penalty, because apparently that's the only thing that most people because apparently that's the only thing that most people pay attention to. Thank you.
Couple things. Let's talk about what Councilmember Clark was just talking about. If it's a temporary fence, typically they're rented or leased fences, will you have a requirement that the owner of the temporary fence would have panels listed with their names and phone numbers on?
Mayor, that is correct. That would be a requirement, that it be listed not only on the permit, but also on the fence itself.
Okay, so with that said, if there was some sort of violation with that particular fence panel or multiple, would code enforcement call the landowners, or would they call the fence company?
Mayor, that would be a question they'd have to decide at that time, depending on what's wrong. If it's a fence that's tilting over and it's in disrepair, it would be with the rental company, which has the responsibility to maintain it. If it doesn't go any forward, then I think the next step would be the owner.
Okay, all right. And I was hoping that would be your answer. And so this probably won't have anything to do with this, although I think it sort of does. I've gotten multiple calls from different landowners that have lots where they're getting illegal dumping in on their property. They're not ready to build on the properties, yet the city won't allow them to put fences up to stop the illegal dumping, but they're in violation if somebody else comes out and dumps on their property. If we won't allow them to put up a permanent fence, which I never totally understood that, why we wouldn't do that. If we won't do that, they're allowed only up to 180 days to put a temporary fence up. And then they would never be allowed to put that or to get another permitting. Is that correct?
So Mayor, it's in line with the thought that if we issue a temporary fence so that they can do something on the property that would ultimately solve whatever the issue is behind it. If it in fact is a permanent situation where the property ownership or the management cannot handle or is not handling illegal dumping on it, or taking measures to clean it up faster, then I don't think putting a fence is the ultimate solution. The ownership has to take responsibility for occupancy to make sure that dumping of that nature doesn't occur. If it were a 180-day permit that's issued, then it is a temporary situation. And if in fact the owner's problem are more permanent in nature, then it has to be a different approach.
Yeah, and I guess I disagree with you on that. If somebody is illegally dumping, that shouldn't be a penalty for the landowner, although I understand that the landowner is responsible for his property. But if we don't allow them to put up a fence to prevent that, it's a catch-22 for the landowner. It's not, I don't think it's fair for the landowner. I would like somebody to put some serious thought in to allow landowners to put up temporary fences to prevent illegal dumping, because I think it's a prudent thing to do. Nobody wants illegal dumping going on. I think it devalues the properties around there. But by not allowing them to do that, we're sort of creating a problem that we don't want. I don't know if everybody agrees or not.
Mayor.
Mr. Aldama.
Thank you, Mayor. To that point, I don't, I've not heard that, they're not, vacant property owners are not allowed to put a permanent structure. If they are, I'd like to hear more about that. However, with the thought of putting up a temporary fence, I think that's reverse blith. So you're preventing the dumping, which I wouldn't want to see, I get it. But then the temporary fencing itself, over years' time in a residential area, becomes a blith and a nuisance. So I think that's where I am with that. But I want to clarify, Councilmember Tomachov's question. Would this ordinance address issues? For example, in my district, I've got some vacant properties in residential areas that have been fenced for years, 15 years, 20 years. Would it address those, so we'd have to revisit those owners, say, hey, we've got a new ordinance? Or is this just construction period? I wasn't clear on your answer.
Mayor and Councilmember Adama, this ordinance pertains to temporary fencing only. So if in your district or wherever, those fences have been there for a considerable amount of time, chances are they aren't on sandbags, they are embedded in the ground, and they continue to be used. They do not require a permit unless it was exceeding a certain height, exceeding six feet by zoning and seven feet if it's got any structural aspects to it.
Thank you, that answers my question. And yeah, back to the temporary fence. And for example, right here, down, just down the street here, we've got a fence and it's been there for years. It's a blith, people want it gone. And so I get what you're saying, it prevents the dumping, but the temporary fence itself, homeowners will complain that it's there too long.
Well, but on the other side of it is that the landowner has been told he cannot put up a permanent fence to protect his property from illegal dumping, means there's not a building on it. Which, he's saying, this doesn't make sense to me. I mean, and I agree with him.
And that's why I asked. I didn't know that. If that's the case, we should probably bring that back and find out why. Because if you have a home, you can, I don't know if there has to be a home before you can build the block wall, but I agree with you, there's an issue there.
So to that question, Mayor, perhaps it would be prudent that staff does some additional research and get back to you on what are the conditions under which permanent fencing can be permitted under certain circumstances? If in fact the property, as you explained, is vacant, no structure on it, and it's being dumped upon by others?
Yeah, and graffiti is an issue, but the dumping seems to be the bigger issue. And we've all seen it, and unfortunately, pretty much all the districts. You had a question?
Well, I was just going to suggest that maybe we check into having some other category to accommodate people in that situation. And if the graffiti's a problem, then maybe we wouldn't want to allow screening on those type of fences. So you can, you know, if there's nothing to write on, then there's nothing, or to paint on, there's nothing to paint on. So, but I think it's a good idea at least to look at, because it's an expense. I mean, I know people who own vacant parcels around, different places around the valley, and it's an ongoing issue to be hauling off stuff that people dump on their property. So, thank you.
Okay, so your action is consensus?
Consensus to allow us to refine this. We'll work in concert with the attorney's office, make it a part of the ordinance, and introduce it when we bring back to you the Unified Development Code.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item four, please?
Council item of special interest, bus stop and bus advertising.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide the staff report today will be our transit director, Kevin Link.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Happy to be here this afternoon to talk to you a little bit about bus stop transit advertising. And the purpose of today's presentation is to get your feedback and direction on several transit advertising options that we have as a city. We'll discuss a little bit about what other cities are doing in the region, and the framework that their contracts are built. We'll talk about the advertising standards that are used throughout the region, mainly the city of Phoenix's advertising standards. And at the conclusion of the presentation, I'd ask for your concurrence or to move forward with a request for information, which we would like to develop and put out to the region to gain more feedback on market conditions and what they think, what the industry leaders will think will work in Glendale, so we can move forward. And I'd also like your concurrence to move forward if we choose to go this route, to move, to adopt the Phoenix standard. So there are a number of different media categories that are used. And transit advertising on your screen are the four most popular. The static are the posters in the kiosk you see at bus stops. They provide a lot of exposure and a lot of eyeballs, so they are the most popular, and they're probably the easiest spots to sell. Bus advertising is another very popular means. You'll see, I'm sure everybody's seen the Phoenix buses running up and down our arterials with their buses wrapped. Digital LED and audio are the least popular, at least for now, mainly due to the infrastructure cost, the cost upfront, and the limited exposure that these two options provide. So on this slide, this shows the, compares the four cities that currently advertise on transit, at transit stops and using their buses and stuff. So you'll see the number of stops that they make available varies across the four cities. The contract term also varies, and I'll talk a little bit about, more about that in a second. So one of the biggest things is that will help determine the amount of revenue that comes back to the city is how the contract is configured and what's all in and what's not. So the maintenance of the actual bus stop, the trash collection, the power washing, that is a big component of it. You can see that Chandler requires their ad agency to do all of the bus stops in the city, cleaning, collecting the trash, power washing. Mesa, they require their ad agency to do just the stops that have advertising added. And then they take care of the rest of the stops through a separate city contract. Peoria maintains all of their stops individually. And then Phoenix, their ad agency maintains the kiosks themselves, while the city maintains all of their stops through a separate city contract. Next, you'll see the types of advertising that are offered by each city. Obviously, all four of them do offer static. Phoenix does have the bus wraps, as they're one of the two providers in the region of fixed route service. And Chandler has a digital component in their contract with their ad agency. However, the agency is not elected to use that yet, to implement it, just due to the small return on their investment, and it's just not profitable at this time. Chandler, Mason, Peoria all have cooperative language. So if we choose to move forward, that would be one avenue, one opportunity for us. Rather than go on our own, we could elect to link up with one of their contracts. And then the last line is the annual revenue. You'll see quite a disparity, and this comes back to what is required of the ad agency. In Mesa, for example, the ad agency purchased 50 shelters and 50 benches, purchased them, installed them. And so they have to amortize the cost of that upfront capital over the life of the contract, hence the 10-year contract. Then at the end of that 10 years, the city would retain ownership of those assets. Phoenix is kind of a separate animal. They've got over 1,100 bus stops plus 600 buses, so their numbers are way, you know, very high, just due to the sheer volume. They collect about $2 million on furniture, and then about $1.5 million on their buses. So what factors into revenue generation? First of all, the ad policy. What would be our policy? What businesses, what kind of products would we are allowed to advertise? The city of Phoenix's standards is pretty exhaustive, and they have a pretty good list. And, but even if we were to adopt that, that doesn't mean that we could not, you know, allow some advertising where they may prohibit. Number of spaces available. Currently, we have 189 shelters deployed in the city. Our thought is that we probably won't advertise on all of them. The first thing that an ad agency would do, once they come on board, is to do an analysis. They'll go out, they'll do a vehicle count, they'll find out the heavily traveled corridors and the busy intersections, and that's where they'll recommend us placing their ads. Infrastructure improvements. The majority of our arterials are covered on both, on all four legs, so we wouldn't necessarily need additional capital or assets to deploy. But we would have to go back and retrofit, because our current situation is with our stops, we don't have room for kiosks, standalone kiosks. So there would be some investment there. Again, we'd have to decide on who maintains and cleans the stops and shelters. It is my recommendation that we would maintain and we would retain that and do it through our current contract, our current provider, just so we have a little more control. And then that would not reduce the amount of revenue that comes in through the ad agency. Length of contract plays into it. Of course, the market demand, after the pandemic hit, the market really kind of bottomed out, as it did with everything on advertising. It's slowly coming back. And then restrictions, and that has to deal with mainly the flow, the funneling of the revenue. If we were to advertise on our current fleet of buses, that revenue would have to stay in transit, as those are federally procured, buses and purchase with federal monies, whereas that's not the case with our shelters. So it's something to consider. So I talked a little bit about the placement. With shelters and benches, obviously, the ad agency wants to use locations that have the highest amount of traffic, highest amount of pedestrian traffic. And that lends itself to the high traffic count intersection, or intersection locations. The standalone kiosks, we would put adjacent to our bus shelters. None of our shelters are currently configured to handle advertising. We would either have to buy some new shelters or install separate kiosks and pour the pad and that kind of thing. Buses, buses are certainly, as I mentioned, a very good option. Currently, there are no advertising in the region on paratransit or circulator fleet. That doesn't mean it can't be. Our Phoenix does use it, obviously. Valley Metro, the other large provider of fixed route service, does not allow advertising on their vehicles currently on their buses. They have talked about it, but there hasn't been a decision on whether or not to change their policy. And then, of course, our discussion with the private partner, our ad agency, once we get them on board, that'll help us determine a lot of where to place these advertisements, what would be the most profitable for both of us. I did mention the Phoenix, so transit, we receive credits from their advertising on their buses in the city of Glendale, based on the amount of revenue miles they operate. So every year, we get anywhere between a $40,000 and $43,000 credit, which offsets the cost of that contract. And then, as I mentioned, there's currently no advertising on the Valley Metro side or the Dollar Rider Circulators. So the standard that is used currently by all four cities is the Phoenix standard. And it's very comprehensive, and it's very productive, and it's stood the test in the courts. There's, in all four of those contracts, they also have 10% of their locations set aside to use for city advertising, for events, news, current, you know, whatever's going on in the city. Of course, the first thing we want to do is sit down with our new vendor and go over the ad policy. All four cities currently allow their ad agency to approve or disapprove the ad content. But if there's a, somebody wants to come and buy a space, an ad space that is gray area, or it could be thought of as a questionable area, then the ad agency refers that to the city, and the city has a final say on whether or not that content is allowed. We would have to decide on who would manage this contract in all four cities. It's the Transportation Transit Department that monitors those contracts and administers them with the help of their marketing department. We checked into the sign ordinance. Currently, there is no sign ordinance or any other ordinance in Glendale that would prohibit advertising either at our stops or on our buses. So here's just a few examples. The one on the left is a full bus wrap of the city of Phoenix, and the one on the right is a partial wrap. The problem with the full wrap is it kind of limits the vision in and out of the buses. Also, wrapping buses tends to, can damage the paint, so it can reduce the lifespan of a paint on a vehicle if we're wrapping, unwrapping, wrapping and unwrapping. So that's something to consider. As far as the full wrap, it's interesting to know Valley Metro Rail is currently looking at possibly reducing their advertising below the windows on their trains, just for the security aspect of seeing in and out of the windows. As I mentioned, there's no advertising in the region on the smaller buses, but here are a couple from around the country. Again, it's, the main drawback with advertising on the small cutaways is it's just a limited space. It's a smaller space to put your ad on. You can't necessarily read all of the writing sometimes, but it doesn't mean it can't be done, and we'll certainly look at it. And we hope the RFI will give us some more input into that, if it could be successful. And the other issue that we need to look at and consider is it covers up the brand. We just recently rebranded our guest service, going with the new colors and the new scheme and the logo, and it'll cover up those, that logo and that brand. Couple more examples of advertising. The one on the left is a standard kiosk in Mesa, and the one on the right is a two-panel Chandler. Again, a couple more examples. The standalone kiosk in Mesa is on the right, or on the left, excuse me, and one on the right again is in Chandler. right again is in Chandler. These two kiosks were installed way after the original shelter was installed, so it can be done, and we just have to make some modifications. The example on the left is a kiosk in Peoria, and then the one on the right is a bench in Phoenix. Oftentimes, what ad agencies will do with benches is if they can get a client to buy two or three spaces somewhere in the city, they'll throw in a bench for reduced cost, you know, just to kind of entice them to buy some advertising. Here's a Photoshop of what it could look like with one of our current stops in Glendale. This is at 67th and Myrtle, and it's a kiosk, a standalone kiosk, just to give you some idea of what it could look like, should we elect to do that. And then another example, at 67th and Glendale on the eastbound side with a kiosk standalone there adjacent to the shelter. So that concludes my presentation. I would like to get concurrence moving forward with developing the information or request for information, the RFI, to put that out to get some idea on the market conditions of what the industry thinks Glendale could support. Also like to get some input on your thoughts on the Phoenix, the Phoenix advertising, whether or not you agree, or if we should adopt that one, the standards, or come up with our own, or just get some general feedback on advertising in general. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. When I had originally brought this item, and I know other council members have as well, I had hoped for the creation of some revenue generating source, but I was looking at the less intrusive types of advertisement, which would be digital and audio, although apparently they're not in popular use or current use at this time. I had considered bus wraps and static, but I also consider them to be visual pollution. And I'm not sure I want to go down that path, especially when you learn that the kiosks will require additional investment and pay money to make money in this particular instance doesn't seem very prudent. If the majority of council decides to pursue this, I would like to keep the digital and audio option in, even though they may not be pursued at this point. But at this point, I'm not interested in wrapping our buses or establishing kiosks. And it did bring to mind another, if we're going to go down that route of wrapping things, wrapping vehicles, then we ought to consider sanitation trucks and city vehicles, cars as well. But at this point, I'm no longer interested in moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So I think that there's, wrapping buses is not the only option. And one thing, one thing we, I would hope we would consider is that Phoenix buses come into Glendale, and the residents and the riders don't know the difference, whether it's our bus, Valley Metro bus, Phoenix bus. So buses with advertising on them are operating in Glendale already because Phoenix comes into Glendale. So, but I'm interested in, now Mesa didn't generate a lot of revenue, but you said something that really caught my interest, is that they basically did an in-kind, I think, for shelters and things like that. I would be very interested in that because we've, you know, we've opined over our desire to have, I mean, a lot of our bus stops are literally a sign in the dirt. That's it. So if we could, you know, generate revenue to cover the cost of upgrading our bus stops, I would be willing to, you know, put some signs up and put some things on buses to get that done for our residents. So, you know, I'm in favor of, we're discussing this at the board at Valley Metro, I don't know where it's going to go, but I would be at least interested. I don't, do you have any numbers for Glendale?
As far as like the number of bus stops and what the possible, did you run any performer
to see like what would be the possibility based on, I mean, it's hard to know what everybody else is doing, but I know Phoenix, you said, I was aware, Phoenix is generating $2 million on infrastructure and $1.5 million. Now, we don't have nearly the miles that they do or the bus stops that they do, but, you know, the cost for us to provide transit continues to go up so quickly and that, and it's an important thing that we have to deliver to our residents. My personal opinion is we should be open to generating revenue to offset the costs where we can. The paratransit program was supposed to be a couple hundred thousand dollars, and it's up to a million and a half or so right now just to provide paratransit. So, and you know, there's federal mandates, and you know, the region decided that we were going to, we were going to offer this service, and, but it's expensive. So I would at least like to take the next step forward and investigating and how we can better, if we look at it from the perspective of how do we better serve our residents, especially those that use transit in the city, and we can provide bus shelters and other things that we're a long way from being able to do, I'd like to at least pursue this, at least to the next step.
And Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, thank you for those comments. I think that's, you know, a lot of that might be flushed out through the RFI. You know, if we go ahead, and even if we issue the RFI, it doesn't mean we have to move forward with the advertising program, but it would give us an idea of what the market could bear. You know, we've talked to a number of agencies, advertising agencies in the region, and the two corridors that always come up are Bell Road and 59th Avenue. They strongly think that those corridors could do well selling advertising. So, and there's, you know, there's no question as to why, just with the traffic counts and the eyeballs that are on the street. So those are one of the two, and then Camelback and Bethany also. So I think if we go forward with the RFI, we can flush some of that out, and we can see, you know, get an idea of what we're looking at. We can certainly look at upgrading our shelters. Like I said, most of our arterials, all four legs are covered. We've got shelters on all four legs of our arterials so that the infrastructure's there, but that doesn't mean that we couldn't upgrade, you know, go to a more modern shelter. Of course, that would reduce the income because they have to amortize, sure. So, but thank you.
Yeah, and a comment that I have, thinking about what Councilmember Tomachoff had just said, I do agree, and I think all of us are aware of spots that really should have better bus stops, benches and things. But I, seriously, and I fought, and I think you probably know this, I fought for a long time to try to get the benches to where they have those dividers in them so people can't sleep on them. And transportation's done a great job this last two or three years of really starting to make that happen. I don't want to go backwards on that. I want to make sure we keep doing that.
And I, Mayor and Council, I neglected to mention in the, that could, that could limit our advertising on benches, but I don't think benches are that, as far as advertising goes, if people are sitting at it, you're not going to see the ads anyway. So the vandal bars that you speak of, that could limit our advertising on benches, but realistically, the money, the money and the revenue is in the panels, the kiosk in and on buses. The other thing with buses is, you know, our circulators are pretty much limited in the geographical area that they operate. So again, the RFI might tell us, yeah, advertising on Gus might be a good thing, or it might not be, just because of the limited exposure in the geographical area. So it's all something we'll look at.
Well, and with that said, I understand on the circulators, the concern about blocking the windows off for visibility for the safety of the driver and the passengers, I agree. But I do think having the back of that bus or circulator as a spot, I think it's something that should be discussed, the very, very back. It's a great platform. It doesn't mean that you lose your logos on the both, both of the sides of it. And then one final thing, we have a few places where the bus stops are almost shelters, and it encourages people to set up camps. And I would hope that whatever you do, that they're designed in a way that that will not happen, that they're open rather than shelters to prevent people from setting up home.
Thank you, Mayor. The stop right over here at 59th and Glen, you know, is a custom bus stop, and we've had an issue there for years. So we removed the back, the side panels and the back panel. That seemed to have helped, but we'll certainly, any new design that we would look at or look at implementing or coming up with, we'll certainly keep that in mind, how, you know, does it allow for or, you know, help with keeping the transits out or, you know, so absolutely, we'll keep that in mind.
Right. Mr. Malner.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with many of the comments that have been stated here today. In particular, I agree with the comment about advertising pollution. I mean, I'm looking at your city comparison. I mean, Mesa brings in $25,000, Peoria $32,000. I'm not sure that if that's the kind of numbers that we're going to be bringing in, that it's worth having that kind of advertising pollution in our city. However, if it's significant, I like the idea of using the monies to improve our stops in other areas. But it's got to be significant enough to justify, in my mind, you know, the advertising pollution, as was coined here, to accomplish that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor, thank you. Given the low dollar numbers that are returned, it doesn't make me very excited about going down this road. I am willing to learn more about it, and if you think the market would, you know, be willing to do an informational report for us, we don't have to decide today. We can always get more information, make a better decision, but just for the sake of, you know, discussion here, I'm not, there's no money in this, and it is a burden on our residents, and I'm not thrilled with it. Maybe we can find some other funding mechanism to add in those bus stops that several of us think are important to have.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, I feel it's an endeavor worth, worth traveling. So I heard RFI, it's worth sending RFI out and see what we don't know. So I'm supportive, I'm going forward with that.
Thank you.
Mayor, I will not be entirely accurate on my numbers, but I'll be pretty close. I believe we've got over 500 bus stops in the city.
Yes, ma'am.
And approximately under 200 have been improved. There are a lot of bus stops that are simply a sign in the dirt. But I will say that after nagging for a couple of years, we do have a bus stop improvement program embedded in our CIP. It doesn't allocate enough dollars, and it's not fast enough, but at least there is recognition of the need to upgrade bus stops. And I, again, I guess I agree mostly with Councilmember Turner and Councilmember Malnar. It would have to be a significant return on investment for me to even consider that. And also, I would like it, as Councilmember Tomachoff indicated, any revenues generated directly and specifically only to the improvement of bus stop shelters. But at this point, at first blush, I don't think it's worth it at this point. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you. Just based on, and I, I mean, they would have to do a study, but if you're looking at Peoria, they have 30 bus stops, we have over 500, so.
But most of them are not usable.
But what I'm saying is, I'm hopeful that the amount of money that we would be able to generate would be somewhere in the $300,000, $400,000, somewhere maybe in that neighborhood because of Bell Road, because of, and based on the, you know, the research that we've already done at Valley Metro. But we don't know that. So until we don't know that, but I mean, I believe it's going to be at least probably well over $200,000, probably over $300,000 that we're going to be able to generate, which could go a long way every year in adding bus shelters and things like that. So we don't know the number, but we do have, we have fixed route service in Glendale, and we have a lot of bus stops. So, you know, I look forward to seeing what you bring us back.
Thank you. And if the consensus is to move forward with the RFI, the plan is that we would bring the results back to council, the results of the RFI, either through a memo or another workshop study session, just to give you the information that we collected and what the industry says as far as opportunities in Glendale. So we wouldn't necessarily move forward with an advertising program immediately. We would wait and see the results of the RFI.
Based upon the discussion that you've heard here today, some of the things that people would like to understand better.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Mayor.
Yes.
I would comment and say that I would think it would necessitate a future workshop. You can't achieve consensus by a memo. And as you can see, this council is not entirely sold on the idea at this point, and it would be dependent upon the results of your investigation after you get the information required.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Consensus? Yeah, okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, we should be up to number five by now. Item five has been pulled from the agenda, so now we're up to number six.
2022 Proposed Water and Sewer Rate Public Outreach Update.
Mayor, members of the council here to provide staff report will be Assistant City Manager
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Before we start, I'd like to just do a brief recap of the meeting we had on June the 8th on our water and sewer rates. Just as a recap, we did a detailed explanation to council on the rate study. We provided two recommendations on the water sewer rates, option one and option two, and we did, we presented our public, a plan for the public outreach. Council decision was, at that time, to move forward with option two, which is basically the level combined 3.7% increase from FY '22 to FY '26, and to proceed with the public So today, we're going to update you on the public outreach plan, and we're going to be showing you, presenting the proposed option two again for you to review, and then we're going to be seeking council consensus and direction for going forward with the proposed five-year rate plan to be considered at the October 26th voting meeting. Finally, we'll go over the next steps in the process. Before I start on the public outreach update, I want to take a minute, and I want to congratulate the Public Affairs Department, especially Sue Bredding and her group. Without them, we couldn't have done this. We learned a lot with them, from them going through this process because we were not used to doing this type of a present, of a outreach, and I think it was very successful. And I'm really proud of the work that they did for us, guiding us through this process. So in working with Public Affairs, they helped us develop the public outreach plan using a new approach, which is leveraging our outreach through social media. What the first thing we did was is we developed our dedicated webpage specifically for water sewer rate increases. We had information on the public meeting in there. We had the information on the council workshops and the voting meetings. We had frequently asked questions with answers. We did an informational video. Staff worked with Public Affairs, and they produced a great video, lasts about two and a half minutes, that highlights the value of water, and also it informs our viewers on the value of water, excuse me. And we also have a customized email address, waterratesglendale.com. All of this is still active on the webpage, and we are still getting hits occasionally on the, on the webpage. The, also, what they helped us to do is they designed posters for us, which were really eye-catching, and they did a good job on those posters. And we installed those at public areas inside the city buildings, customer service and building, the adult center, all of our libraries, foothills, rec center, and aquatic center, and the Glendale Community Center, so, and outside all the elevators in City Hall. and the Glendale Community Center, so, and outside all the elevators in City Hall. We also distributed 4,500 electronic newsletters to subscribers who received council districts, the Glendale Chamber and the registered neighborhood newsletters. So there's about 4,500 of those. And then we also changed the online hold, the on-hold message in the city's phone number so people could get information on that, from that also. Continuing on, we also did press releases to multiple television outlets, radio stations and print and web media newspapers. We conducted staff interviews with two radio stations. We utilized the social media that you see up there heavily. And postcards with public information were mailed over 60,000 of our services addresses and this is, this is the postcard that went. Hopefully, everybody on the council got one of these. Now, the public meeting format, prior to July the 27th, in our last public outreach that we performed for water and sewer races back in 2017, back then we did the, we had four venues and we did our standard open house, which we had easels and we stood around and we answered questions from people that came to view what was going on. We did those in the evening hours and we did them on weekend timeframe. And so we presumed citizens were not being at work at that time and would be able to attend. The meeting results were low turnout. So we expected to see more people and we, we were all there and we were ready to answer questions, but our turnout was pretty low. Over the past year, we've gotten accustomed to attending virtual meetings that have gained popularity for a host of reasons. Tune in at your home or in your office. There's no travel involved and it's convenient to watch it at your leisure. And I think you'll see from the views that that was a pretty good plan. So on July the 27th, we hosted the virtual meeting at 2:00 PM here in the chambers. And the meeting was livestreamed on Facebook, YouTube and Channel 11. The meeting was hosted by Public Affairs Assistant Director Sue Breding. We had two presenters because we made a presentation on a PowerPoint and we'll give you the subjects of those in a minute. And then we had a panel of three people that answered questions. Staff monitored the social platforms before, during and after the presentation so we could gather up answers to questions while we were still present in the meeting. So the items we covered in the, in the meeting were water and sewer systems, rate objectives, operating and maintenance expenses, water supply, infrastructure, improvements and rehabilitation, the 2022 proposed rates and rate comparisons, the value of water, assistance programs, next steps and questions and answers. We had some public show up for the meeting, there were around 20 there. And I thought that was pretty good. They had a number of questions and they were very good, well-thought-out questions. But here's the, here's the important information. Social media views, we had over 202 YouTube views, we've had 696 Facebook views, so we're close to 900 views totally, total. And we've not seen numbers of attendees in any of our in-person evening, weekend meetings To follow up on our questions and answers, I wanted to divide them into some common themes. So the common theme for these were, again, well-thought-out, not so much concentrated on why are you raising rates or whatever. I think the explanation through the presentation was adequate because we didn't get any direct questions like that. What we did get was, what about your water capacity? Do we have enough water to make it through the drought? We have projects like Crystal Lagoons coming. Are we okay with doing that or whatever? So we explained to them our 100-year assured water supply and our portfolio and how it's built and how it's divided up between SRP and C and our well water. And then we also shared with them that we've been preparing for a drought for a long time. So, and the drought has been, we're going on 22 years now in drought in the state of Arizona. So we are prepared. We shared with them that we do have the drought management plan and that's, and I didn't get, I didn't seem to get follow-up questions to that, so I assumed they understood what we were, how we were going with that. And then with respect to Crystal Lagoons, I told them that, Crystal Lagoons, yes, it's a 20 million gallon lake that'll be filled, but 20 million gallons is a lot of water. I'm not going to argue with anybody on that, but in the big scheme of things, that's a Salt River Project area served by Salt River Project. We've got 55,000 acre feet, which equates to about 10 billion gallons and authorization from SRP. That's a 20 million gallon, which is about 60 acre feet and that's about, it's less than 1% of our overall allocation. We, I did share with them that we are very interested in the engineering there. We're interested in their evaporation techniques and how they're going to do it, so we're very interested in that. So whenever we do get an economic development project in here, we always look at their sewer demands and always look at their water demands to make sure that it fits within our expectations for the area where they're going to build. That seemed to be accepted from that person who's asking that question. The, the next question came up, a theme was using a federal infrastructure funding. I think that's our ARPA funds and I'll let Vicky kind of, she kind of handled that one.
Yes, Mayor and council, I handled this. We did have a couple of questions about that, about the use of those federal funds and what my answer to those questions was that we're still looking at the available uses or the allowed uses of that and that we'd be meeting with council and that would be part of your decision-making would be how we were going to use those federal funds. So again, that seemed to satisfy, it was asked a couple of times and we just answered that we're still looking at it and that you'd be making decisions about that in the near future.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
Vice Mayor, if I could just make the point quickly because I have been working on this issue. The amount of money that's owed to the Water Services Fund left over from the transfer to the NHL is $13,458,750, I think. I think I have that memorized by now. So, and there are ongoing conversations and when ARPA is brought back, I have, I will have some information that I want to share on possibly, ARPA is for sure eligible for water infrastructure, so we could probably reduce the amount we would need to bond for and save money that way. So, but I just wanted to give you the amount of money that, because it was spread across solid waste, landfill and water services, that's the amount still owed to Water Services. Thank you.
And then in addition to that, gosh, this is really loud now for me. In addition to that, there were a lot of questions, not a lot, but some of the people had specific questions about their bills, their water bill. And we repeatedly deferred them to ask them to speak directly with our customer service people. So we had Paul Lopez from our customer service manager there. He was able to meet with those people after the meeting, talk with them about it and resolve all of, all of their issues. And so people did come up and talk about their personal water accounts. And again, we answered those after the meeting. We didn't want to get into too much personal discussion during the open meeting, but he's handled all of those now.
Mayor, council, we also got a chance to educate people. They had some questions on how do they, if they find a leak in the yard, what do they do? How's that work? We basically shared with them on how to inspect your own meter and who to call and we'll come right out and we'll help them with, if they've got a high usage on their meter and they can't, and it's unexplainable, then we'll help them find the answer to that. And then we had one question that came up on elderly and disabled or people on fixed income and Vicky shared with them our programs. As you all know, you approved $50,000 out of Water Services to go to the CAP office and then there's, the CAP office has got a lot of other opportunities for people who are on fixed income and being able to help them.
So just as a reminder to council, this is what the current rate, proposed rate plan looks like. On the left-hand side, it shows you what the rates would be on a combined basis and a percentage basis for both water and sewer. And then on the, I'm sorry, on the left-hand side. And then on the right-hand side, it equates that to a dollar amount per month for a customer using about 9,000 gallons of water. We did answer a few questions at the meeting about people who used more or less water than that. Again, if you use less water, your increase on a monthly basis will be less. And if you're using significantly more water, your increase on a monthly basis would be more because we bill based on consumption. And so that's information that was also presented, this is the same information that was presented to council before. So this is the plan that we'd be moving forward with. At this point, the next step in the process would be, you do have an item on the agenda tonight to consider filing what is called or approving what is called a notice of intention to increase water rates. That doesn't mean you're increasing the water rates. It means you're informing the public that you're considering it and setting the date for the public hearing so that they have plenty of notice. It also lets them know that they can look at the rate study that the city has done and the justification for those rates. It'll be on file in the clerk's office and it's also available on the city's, it will also be available on the city's website. And set the date for the public hearing and then if we move forward with that, the date for that public hearing would be October 26th. And at that point, again, the public can come forward. We're leaving the website up and so the public can still comment through the website or ask questions and we've been answering those questions as they come in. And then the formal vote would also, or could also take place on October 26th. And if we move forward with that timeline, the rates would be effective for January 1st of 2022. Do you have anything?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to say that I wasn't able to watch the entire public meeting, but I watched the second half of the public meeting and you guys did an excellent job. I want to say kudos to you guys. I mean, some of, some of those questions were, you know, they kept, I just think you guys did a really good job. I don't want to get into the personal part about the people that came there, but thank you because you were extremely patient and I mean, it's, it's a, how we bill for water is a complicated issue and a lot of our users don't understand how we bill, so it gets really confusing and you guys showed an extreme amount of patience, so thank you for that. I did want to ask if, a lot of our customers pay their water bill online. And so is there a way that we could work with IT or something to have some sort of pop-up or something when they log in to pay their water bill? Because I know, I think there's something going out in the connection, but a lot of people just get an email that, you know, they don't, they just pay their bill online. They log in and pay their bill. And I think we're getting, lowering the amount of paper that we're sending out too. So I just don't know if there's a way to do that, but I, and I don't even know what the percentage is of people who pay online, but I think it's quite a few. I've had a lot of people contact me recently with the new system, trying to get in. So is there, is there a way to notify, because they're not going to probably, they're probably just going to go where they go to pay their water bill and not see anything else.
Mayor, members of the council, I can certainly check with IT on that. It has been sitting on the city's main page for a while as a notification to go to that dedicated website. I'm not sure when we'd be taking that down, but I can make sure that it's a headline as well. We're also required to let the public know at least 60 days before a rate increase or that we're contemplating a rate increase or that you are. And so there's an area on the city's website there as well and we can make sure that those are prominent and so people can continue to see them. The people that are going to pay their bills see the header on the website as well. So I'll make sure that those are available and I'll see if we can do a pop-up. I'm not sure about that.
Okay. Because your browser remembers where you went, so you may not take you to the homepage either. If you don't log into the city website frequently, it'll probably just take you to whatever you typed in last, wherever you ended up last time. So, and I, maybe I'm mistaken, I thought that you could opt out of paper billing.
Mayor, members of the council, yes, you can opt out of paper billing.
Right.
And in fact, if you pay your bill online now, you have to opt in or opt out of paper billing. So, but I'll check into it. I don't, I don't know.
All right.
We did recently upgrade that system and I'm not sure if it has that capability.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify the question that was asked or that this councilmember Tomachoff clarified, the use of the federal monies to go towards paying off the debt that is owed to the Water Services. There's been some concerns by some residents that we should be using that money to pay that off and therefore we might not be able to, may not need as big of an increase. So could you address that a little bit more in detail as to why we can or cannot do that?
So, Mayor, members of the council, we cannot use the federal money, the way I understand it, to pay off the loan, so to speak, or that inter-fund loan. What we can do, however, is pay for some portion of water infrastructure if that were the desire to do that. So we could use it to pay for water infrastructure. That's one of the allowed uses, but we cannot use it directly to pay off the loan. What you would have to do is pay for the infrastructure and then just stop paying for the loan, if that makes sense.
So we could use the monies to, to have, as councilmember Tomachoff suggested, have a lower bond, because many of the infrastructure we're going to be bonding for, we would have a lower amount of bond if we were to allocate money from the federal government into that, which would reduce overall property tax, but would not affect the rates. Is that correct?
Mayor, members of the council, in my opinion, again, and I've spoken to councilmember Tomachoff about this, the wisest financial move to make would indeed be if you pay for a piece of infrastructure that the utility was going to bond fund for, that would reduce the amount that you bond fund. Those are not paid by property taxes, these particular bonds, they're paid by the water user fees. And so there is a scenario under which you could bond fund for less. When we looked at that, and I'd be happy to share it, I've passed that along to councilmember Tomachoff because she asked for it. It has not a large impact on these rates and the reason is that for the water utility, $13 million seems like a lot of money and I would never say it's not a lot of money, but it's a very small portion of their overall debt portfolio and also would be a very small portion of their revenue. And so it, it has some impact, but it doesn't have a very large impact on the rate scenarios that we have shared with council.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, she was next.
Thank you, Mayor. At this point, I'm still inclined to vote no on the, on raising the rates for water and sewer. I will be requesting a future meeting with staff to discuss this further. Tonight, I will vote to support the authorization of further consideration of the issue. So I don't want my yes vote tonight to be considered as a wholehearted approval of the water rate increase. There are a couple of things that, that still bother me about the water rate increase or the rate increases that are proposed. One is the issue of compounding. Yeah, maybe an average person with a 9,000 gallon water bill will see an increase of $1.77. But that is added to the bill so that when the next 3.7% is imposed the following year, it's with that additional money that that resident is already paying. I'm not sure, there's no other way for me to describe it at this point, but it's seeming to be quite unfair. So I, I would like to see if at all possible that we figure out a way to adjust the rate to allow for compounding on an annual basis that occurs with customers. I also know a lot of people whose bill is much larger than 9,000 gallons a month. And we heavily publicize that 9,000 gallons a month as an average user, but I think it's in terms of our best interest and full disclosure to also as thoroughly disclose and as widely disclose. disclose and as widely disclose what happens to a user who uses a lot more than 9,000 gallons a month, because I think the dollar amount is significantly different on a monthly basis. So I've thought about this long and hard. I've not come to a fast decision yet, but as I said, at this point, I'm inclined not to support the increases. And also, when I do talk to staff about this, another item that I want from them is how much of the rate increase goes toward needed infrastructure upgrade, and how much of the water rate increase will be applied to perhaps more ethereal things such as creating redundancy or things that are not absolutely critically necessary. And Mr. Johnson, I think you, you know what I mean. So those are, those are questions that I will have for staff when we have an opportunity to discuss this in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Now it's on, okay. I just want to circle back because I do have the information. In fact, we just spoke about it this morning, about if we were to apply the $13,458,750 to infrastructure, water infrastructure, that we would not have to bond for over the life of the debt, which is, I think, 17 years left on it. It would save about 3.9 million in interest paid in the enterprise fund for water. It would also save the general fund $1.3 million, because the general fund's paying interest on paying the money back. So the total of that is $5.2 million over time, and we refinance bonds all the time to save money. So, I mean, it's, well, it really won't have any effect on, there's no way for it to have an effect on the water rates. That doesn't really, the math doesn't work for that. It's so insignificant, but it would have a definite effect on long-term paying interest on, on paying that, basically, we bonded ourselves to pay it back. So when we talk about ARPA money, there'll be more information, but since I have the information in front of me, I wanted to make sure that I shared it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so do we have a consensus to move forward for tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then the following October 26 meeting?
Yes.
All right. There you go.
All right, thank you. That's all that we needed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Bauer, would you move item seven, please?
Presentation regarding City Code, Chapter 25, Desert Landscaping Conditions.
Mayor, members of the city council, here to provide the final staff report this afternoon is Rick St. John, Deputy City Manager.
There it goes.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. This is a conversation that was had in the code review committee before the summer break, bringing this discussion to you today. This is the recommended language from the code review committee on minor adjustment landscape maintenance. There is a key component to the, to the new language that talks about natural desert landscape, and I think that's where most of our conversation is going to be today. If I can advance the slides, there we go. So we are seeking council approval today for the proposed language from the code review committee, and I'll go through that language in detail. The current language talks about grass or weeds in excess of six inches. A lot of times with desert landscaping, there becomes a blight issue, but the grass or weeds do not exceed six inches, and so it becomes difficult to enforce. Code review committee would like to change the language so that we can address those yards that have an abundance of grass within their rock, making it difficult at times to determine whether intent is to either have a gravel front yard or a desert landscape, or if in fact they are trying to grow grass. And I have a couple of demonstrations, some pictures that demonstrate some of these things. My apologies, I clicked on the wrong button. So here is an example of a lot of grass that's growing in the desert landscape. However, it does not exceed six inches, and so it is difficult for code to enforce. Another couple of examples. And again, another few examples that we see, and these are fairly common within our community. So again, the new language from the code review committee would say that a person shall not allow there on grass or weeds to grow in a manner that such conditions create a blighting issue or condition, or may harbor infestations, or likely to become a hazard of the public health or safety. Also, added to the language, desert landscape property is property that is primarily composed of crushed stone, aggregate stone, pavers, and native desert plants. And again, these are some examples of native desert plants that can be purchased at your local plant shops, nurseries, if you will, including Home Depot Lowe's and other places that sell these types of things. And so the language as proposed by the code review committee would allow those native desert plants to grow within the aggregate rock area. And I know that at times that has caused some concerns for members of our community, but if this council were to get consensus for the language as it stands in this presentation, then a lot of those natural desert plants would be allowed. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, we are seeking consensus.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I just would like to lend my support to this proposed new ordinance, and its language is written as a member of the council subcommittee that dealt with this. I know it was raised there as an issue, and I can see it as an issue throughout my district, certainly in a grass lawn. Grass or weeds at the six-inch level is probably where we should be enforcing, but if you have desert landscaping, then that's what it should be and not, not be dealing with the encroachment of Bermuda grass or other things like that. It creates a blighted condition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I'm in support of this. The only thing that I'm, I might be concerned about is the term native desert plants, because people have lantana, and they have other things that are hardy desert plants, but they may not be native desert plants. So I don't know whether, you know, we should just say desert landscape or something, because, you know, people do, I don't think bougainvillas, and a lot of stuff that you find in a desert landscape that are easy to grow, that require little or no maintenance, are not native, necessarily native landscape. But I think it's, it's a good thing. And I did have a question, actually, on slide, do we, slide six, the one on the right, it appears, well, some of the other landscape is dead, too, but it appears that the person probably sprayed, wound up or something, and then just left it. Is that a code violation?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, that would not be a code violation, but we would ask them to remove the dead landscape to include the weeds that have dried up.
So, Mayor, if I could continue. So does our code say you must remove dead landscape?
There are, Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, there are provisions of the code that talk about removing dead and, I'll just say dead landscape items.
Okay. All right. Thank, because it kind of cracks me up. He's like, well, I sprayed the weeds. Now I'm done. So, all right, thank you.
Anyone else? Your consensus to move forward? Go ahead, Jenny.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So with regard to the desert, the native desert plants, that is a really tough, tough issue there. So there's desert plants that you can plant, and then by seedlings will fall and reggerminate. That's probably okay.
Mayor, Councilmember Aldama would be under this language.
And then there's those native plants that just come in by either bird dropping or by just the wind and grow on their own, and they're desirable by the homeowner, but maybe not by the neighbors. Are those allowed, and how do we determine them?
Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, those would also be allowed, and the determination is difficult. What we try to do is research the type of plant and/or flower that it is, and then we research whether or not it is native to Arizona desert landscaping. We look at nurseries such as Home Depot Lowe's and the nurseries that exist. We bring pictures. We talk to the people that work in those nurseries to get a determination from them. At the end, we really just try to figure out, is this a weed that we should be enforcing against, or is this a natural desert plant that we would have a very difficult time getting through our court system?
Thank you, Mr. St. John. I think we need to identify what is an actual weed, not necessarily what is a plant. I think that's an easier route, just my opinion. I recently had, I sent you an email on a, on a couple, on a neighbor dispute on a weed. It in fact was a weed, not a native plant. Looked like one, had a nice flower on it, but it was an actual weed. So, you know, it's one of those tough things, but I'd like to see us identify what is a weed, and then when we report out, that's a weed within the city, so, thank you.
Yeah, the discussion up here is, I think they just legalized weeds.
It's all legal. Put it in your yard.
They did legalize weed.
Yeah. So, you know, obviously, the definition of a weed is if you want it or you don't want it. If you're growing grass and your grass grows, well, that's what you want. If you're growing, or not growing, if you have desert landscaping granite and grass grows, then that becomes a weed, so.
Correct.
Yeah.
Difficult to...
I think the definition of a weed, if it's changed, is a plant out of place. But I think that is the definition.
Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, there is a definition of weed in the code. I'm not, I can't recall it offhand, but there is a definition there. We can certainly look at it and make sure that it's sufficient.
Yeah.
Yeah. I do think Councilmember Tomachoff's question on native, I think that could be problematic, so figure out a different way to identify that. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. If the proposed language will take care of the situations that are shown to us in the slides in today's presentation, these photographs...
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, they would.
If they will do that, that's 99% of the problems in my district, so I'll be happy to have that accomplished, and we can haggle over weeds versus native plants at some other day, case by case.
Thank you.
City manager report.
Mayor, members of the council, I have two quick items to brief you on. First, the American Association of Airport Executives, which represents over 7,000 professional executives, both domestically and internationally, each year select a distinguished service award as part of what they do. And very proud to say that our own Carl Newman, who is our Glendale Airport Administrator, was named the 2022 recipient for the American Association of Airport Executives Distinguished Service Award. And so I hope if you get a chance, reach out and to congratulate him. We're very proud of the work that he's doing, and he's, he's been accomplishing a lot at the airport in his short time, and so again, I encourage you to reach out and to congratulate him. The second item, wanted to talk to you real quickly. Recently, I had an opportunity to meet with some officials from ASM. As you know, ASM manages our Gila River Arena, but they manage arenas and stadiums all around the world. We had, some time ago, had asked them to kind of begin the thought process of what would it take to perhaps make improvements to the Gila River Arena that would keep it competitive and compelling going into the future? And so, you know, a good example being recently the, now called the Footprint Arena, which is where the Phoenix Suns play, went through an enhancement to their facility, which kind of made it feel almost like a brand-new facility. So they have been working for three or four months. They invited a number of world-recognized architectural firms that specialize in arena and stadium design to come visit the arena and maybe propose ideas and concepts that, if the city were to go forward, that would show how we could make improvements to the, to the arena. So several weeks ago, it was, it was a challenge to get everything kind of scheduled. I was able to view five firms, just kind of concepts. There are nothing binding on this. It was just their ideas of what we could do with our arena. The encouraging news is that it appeared there was a high level of excitement that the Gila River Arena has, I know we use this term a lot, but really has really good bones at which to work with. Sometimes when you go to renovate a stadium or an arena, they're just, everything is wrong, and it becomes very, very expensive to really, to really improve it. But there seemed to be a high level of interest that they think that when the time comes, and if the time comes, the city wants to invest back into the arena, that we should be able to get some really exciting concepts and be able to do it in a way that still has a return on investment back to the city. So at some time this fall, they may begin a more formal procurement process to see if they can identify a single firm. Obviously, we would come back and talk to the council with those ideas and concepts, but it would just be kind of a next step in terms of doing that. But again, very exciting, I think, just to know that these firms, and these are firms that have designed some of the most, you know, well-known, recognized arenas and stadiums in the world, really felt like that even though we're, you know, 18 years old in the Gila River Arena, that we have a lot to work from in the event that the council would like to move forward. And with that, that does conclude my report.
All right, thank you. City attorneys report.
No report, thank you.
All right. Our next item is agenda, council items of special interest. Each council member has the opportunity to indicate topics that they'd like to have discussed by this council at a future workshop, and I'm going to start off tonight, or this afternoon. Last week, I had an opportunity to meet with Family Promise, with one of the owners of Rolfe Salon, and then also with Ted Taylor, which operates Family Promise, and then the Legacy Foundation, Gerald Wishnick, to talk about opportunity for the city to start addressing homelessness within families. So I have an address of 6242 North 59th Avenue, which is the first Christian church. They are willing and wanting to work with Family Promise and the Legacy Foundation to work on this. So my request is that staff research that, and at the very, very first early opportunity, get back with us and let us know. And if there's any questions that the staff may have, I can go into more detail, but that's pretty much what my ask is. So we'll go ahead and go to Councilmember Aldama.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Mayor brought to me this, this item because it lies in my district, and I just want to lean support on that item of interest in preventing homelessness in the city of Glendale. Yes, I'd like to ask our city staff to look into creating an ordinance that would be titled a slumlord ordinance, that would prevent property owners from creating an environment that's substandard. We have a couple of locations, but I'm sure if we dig in deep, they're probably all over the place, but they're not allowed in Glendale, and I'd like to see an ordinance created on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Clark.
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Melner?
Nothing today, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Tomachoff.
Yes, Mayor, I have a couple things. One thing I have is kind of tagged onto what you were speaking about. I'd like to have a conversation, a workshop, to know more, understand more about our loitering ordinance, overnight camping ordinance, and erecting an enclosed structure in a, in a public right-of-way. What is, does our ordinance that we have address that? Are we able to by what are the Ninth Circuit Court ruling? But I'd like to have a discussion about, are we doing everything we can, at least? And we're moving and trying to offer more services. We've got, we're, we're moving in that direction, but we've been, probably all of us to cities where quickly the tent communities get out of control. So I'd like to have that, number one. And then the other thing I have is we received the first installment of the ARPA funds on May 24th, and it was $29,758,355. We're going to get another, I believe it comes by wire, I think, probably, next May, May of 2022. I believe that departments have been asked to send to the city manager's office their, what they, what their vision is for, for this ARPA money, but we have not been asked. So I would like to get that on a workshop so the council can offer some input and have a conversation on our vision and where we think that the money should be focused on and with this, at least, initial ARPA distribution. Thank you.
Councilmember Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would certainly concur with Councilmember Tomachoff's last COSI request. And then in addition, for myself, as a request, several years ago, for quite some time, the city had a commission on neighborhoods, or a neighborhoods commission.
city had a commission on neighborhoods, or a neighborhoods commission, and they had the opportunities to provide grants and do, I think, activities in our neighborhoods. I think it was around 2015 or 16, after the recession, when there was no money to be spent on that, that the commission was disbanded. I would like to have a briefing paper at the minimum of what that commission did, and the kinds of things they accomplished, where the funds came from, and so that the council might consider re-establishing that, now that we are no longer in the financial straits we were at that time. Thank you.
Vice mayor.
I'd just like to join with your request, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so can I get a motion going to executive session? I'll move.
Second.
A motion in a second to an executive session, any discussion here, none in favor, but aye?
Aye.
Any opposed about neighbors, yes, have it. Do have, council meetings recess, we'll meet right back here in our normal exec room.